All right, I call this meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 6 o'clock PM on January 22nd, 2024. For the record, Board members present are Kim Brady, Randy Shackman, and myself, Cassandra Hatfield. We do not constitute a quorum and will not be conducting business on behalf of the district tonight. The next item is Audience for Guest. Persons wishing to speak during Audience for Guest must have completed a form for this purpose and placed it in the designated location prior to the opening of the meeting. Ms. Canada has told me we do not have anyone wishing to speak, so with that, we'll move forward. We will proceed to our next agenda item, item number two. Presentation and Information Session for Individuals Who are Interested in Running for the CFB ISD School Board. This presentation and information session is being presented to educate members of the CFB ISD community who are considering running for the school board. Topics to be covered will include, but are not limited to, the laws, policies, and requirements related to candidate eligibility, duties, and the responsibilities of the school board, and the general election information. The session will also include the provision of information from two school board members regarding their individual experiences as sitting board members. So with that, I'll introduce myself. My name is Cassandra Hatfield, and I am currently the school board president, and we are so excited to have you all here with us tonight. As I mentioned, the purpose of our presentation is really to inform the community. This was born out of an initiative from the school board last year where we really wanted to make sure that our community members understood what the school board does and how you can engage if you wanted to in running for the school board. And so, we developed this presentation last year and then are continuing it this year. And so, we will be sharing a lot of information with you tonight and are also happy to answer questions. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Brady.
Hi, I'm Kim Brady. I've been on the school board for about a year and a half, so it's still kind of brand new to me. I will say that you learn a lot, so it's good to know all of this information tonight. It would be overwhelming, but please be sure to go back and check our website so that you'll have it. You can print it off, you can play with it, you can reread it a thousand times if you'd like. So, I hope you enjoy tonight. So here's our agenda for this evening. This presentation will be available after the meeting and contains multiple hyperlinks where you can find out more information about the specific topics that we will address. Tonight, we will share valuable information about what school board members do in our service of our CFB community. However, we also want to make it clear that this is not meant to be an all-encompassing resource guide. We will address common questions arise for individuals seeking an election to the Board of Trustees. More extensive information is available online at these various resources. The recording of this presentation, along with the PDF of the presentation with clickable links, will be available online at cfbelections.com. The clickable links are all in blue underline text throughout the presentation. Also during this presentation tonight, both Cassandra and I are speaking on behalf of ourselves personally and not on behalf of the entire board. Here are some of our district facts. One of the facts that I found particularly astonishing was that our CFB ISD encompasses 53.42 miles, which is a lot of ground to cover. We have 57 different spoken languages in our district, and approximately 82% of our kids are enrolled in CTE programming. We also encompass both Dallas and Denton Counties, and we are, we have six cities within the CFB ISD limits. Some more of our district facts. We have approximately 24,500 students, 38 campuses, about 35, 3,600-plus employees, and you can see our ethnicities that are broken down. Our economically disadvantaged encompasses about 66% of our population.
All right, so next up, we want to share a video with you that just explains a little bit more about our roles as trustees. So one of our objectives is to try to show you different modalities of information. So I will share a little video, and then I'll go into our roles a little bit more.
My name is Rachel, and I'm in the sixth grade. I was invited to go to the school board meeting to get an award, but I didn't know what a school board did. So, I asked my grandpa Freddy, since he used to be on the force. He said, "Well, school boards are kind of like grandparents to schools. They want good things from the students and staff. Even though grandparents aren't always around, we do our best to help you learn and grow." Let me see if I can explain it in another way. Think of the school board team as building a bridge between the community and the schools. They're your voice. Board members listen to parents, community members, school staff, and even the students about their hopes and dreams for their schools. They share these messages with the superintendent and other school leaders, and they advocate for their school district by speaking up for them with other elected officials and within the community. Another important job on the board is to provide direction for the schools. School board members choose a destination for the district. They might let the students to go to Kentucky McCanns, Paris, France, or even Lars, but they don't tell the staff how to get there. They empower the superintendent, the staff, and students to choose their path. The board also makes a lot of decisions about hiring a superintendent. The superintendent is the leader to make sure that the operations of the schools run well. The superintendent helps determine the best routes under that, along with the staff and students. The school board also ensures that resources are in place so that the staff can complete their work and make sure students can reach their destinations. Let's say that the schools want their students to be able to play a musical instrument, if they'd like, or fix a car, or understand algebra, or other opportunities. The board makes sure that the school district has the money, staff, and materials in the right places at the right time to ensure success. The board and superintendent team help students complete their journey to their local schools and prepare them for the future. After talking to grandpa Freddy, I had a much better understanding of what school boards do. They build a bridge so that the community and the schools can communicate, and they set destinations for the schools so that I can reach my goals. The school board looks out for me, just like my grandpa and grandma do.
So as you can see, we have quite a big job as the school board to really work to support our students and our staff throughout the district. It is an honor. I have served on the, on the school board for two and a half years, and it's really been an honor to serve our community and really engage with our community and learn more about the needs of our community. So I'm going to share a little bit more about the roles of the school board members, and I'm going to group them in five categories. And so, I'll go into each one of these categories in more detail. So I'll start with the first one, which is adopting goals and priorities and monitoring success. So as a Board of Trustees, one of the most important things we do is really make sure that it's clear to the superintendent and the staff what direction we want the district to go in. And we do that in a couple different ways. One of those ways is by adopting a long-term strategic plan. And so, we have Collaborative Vision 2030, which was developed in 2019 by community members and staff to really pull together a 10-year plan. Our vision and mission statements were adopted again when this was developed. And as you can see, optimizing was the real focus of our 10-year strategic plan, really making sure that we're in all areas of our organization, optimizing our resources, optimizing the health of our students, optimizing our facilities, safety, security, and infrastructure, our community engagement, and really how we're teaching our students. And so, that strategic plan, like we said, the blue hyperlinks, this will be available on our website, and you can click on that blue link, and it'll take you to the strategic plan so you can see our 10-year plan. Then we also have an annual plan. The annual plan is developed by the District Improvement Council, who works collaboratively. It's community members, staff members, district administration members who work together to really develop a one-year improvement plan to continue to engage the district in that continuous improvement model. So we adopt one of those annually. Within that, there are also campus improvement plans. Our campuses also look at data and make decisions about how they're going to have continuous improvement models. And so, we adopt those. And then finally, we have House Spell three goals. In 2018, the legislative session set a requirement that boards must have goals in early childhood literacy, mathematics proficiency, and college career and military readiness. So as a part of this, the school board adopted three goals, and we monitor those annually since 2019 for an ultimate goal of continuing to improve the outcomes for our students in those three areas. So this is one of the roles of a school board member, is to adopt the goals and priorities. And then we work with the superintendent to monitor the organizational effectiveness towards those goals that are set. Another one of our roles is to adopt policies and review them for effectiveness. So this is also, I'm going to say they're all important because all five of the things I'm going to share with you, I feel really passionately about. But there are two buckets that policies fall into. One of them is legal, and the other one is local. Legal policies are what I would consider to be the non-negotiables. They're based on the laws set forth by the legislature, and we don't have the flexibility to change those. However, we do adopt them, and every time the legislature meets and they adjust the laws and that are set forth, we then adopt the legal policies and review them to make sure we understand and are in compliance with the legal requirements set forth by the legislature. Then we have local policies. Local policies are directives from the board itself. So we adopt and re-adopt local policies as the board sees fit. This is really our chance to really look at what local needs we have and make decisions or policies that are set forth to really align with our community beliefs and values. We do have what we call a policy subcommittee, so you're going to hear more, Kim's going to talk about it, I'll talk about it. We operate as a body corporate. And so, I, as an individual, do not make a policy, adopt a policy. We operate as a body corporate, all seven of us working collaboratively behind the dais. But we do have what we call subcommittees. And subcommittees give us a chance to really dive deeper into something and make sure that people can spend more time. It develops, it takes the workload and really develops it among us and gives us all different buckets that we can really dive deep into. And so, we do have a policy subcommittee, and our policy subcommittee takes deep dives into policies and really looks at things that we need to dive deeper in and make some decisions on. So I will give you some examples. I'm actually going to take you to the Board Policy Manual so you can see. And on the Board Policy Manual, this is available on our website, you'll see that it's broken into sections ranging from district foundations, local government, business and support, personnel, instruction, students, and community and government relations. And I will just show you an example. Within the section A, AE is the educational philosophy, and you'll see that there is a legal framework and a local policy. So the legal framework, like I mentioned, is that what the legislature has defined that we do not have control over. So you will see within here that they talk about how the board shall adopt a vision statement and comprehensive goals for the district and superintendent. So they have mandated that that is our responsibility to adopt a vision statement and comprehensive goals. And when you go into the local policy, you then see our mission and vision statement. So this has been locally developed versus the legal framework said that we shall develop a vision statement. So that's kind of the difference between local and legal policies. Another one I'd like to show you, that's a good example of our operations policies, is CW. You can see we have a lot of policies that govern the district. So it is called a naming facilities policy, and you'll notice there is not a legal policy on this one, there is only a local policy. So the board worked collaboratively a few years ago to define how we will name facilities within the district. So that's an example of an operational policy that we develop locally within the district to really govern and help us have procedures set forth on how we are going to name new facilities and the procedures that go along with that. So hopefully, that helps you better understand the difference between local and legal policy. And next up, one of our responsibilities is to hire and evaluate the superintendent. So what's really important about this one is the superintendent is the school board's only employee. We hire and evaluate the superintendent. It is our job as a corporate body to work with the superintendent. We provide oversight of management, policymaking, planning, and evaluation. So we really determine the what. What are the priorities of the community? What do we want the district to focus on in our continuous improvement model? But the superintendent is responsible for the day-to-day operations and management of the district, and so she really does the how of the district. So what is determined by the board? What are our goals? What are our priorities? What are the policies we want to govern the district? And then that day-to-day operations is conducted by our superintendent. We, the board, hire the superintendent and evaluate the superintendent and provide oversight and really direction to the superintendent. Another one of our roles and responsibilities that the community likes to know a lot about is adopting a budget and setting the tax rate. So what it really is really important about this is that it does say, "Adopt a budget." So we do have expert staff that really help to work with our budget and look within the boundaries that we have and make sure that we are in alignment with being able to meet the needs of our students. And they're the experts in the field, but we look at that and we adopt that budget. But what we also do is we might say, well, if the initiative of the board or a priority of the board is to focus on, for example, attendance, which is one of our priorities right now, then what funds are going towards that initiative to make sure we're meeting the needs of the students and really supporting our goal of attendance? So they, they manage the day-to-day funds, but we do adopt and monitor the budget. The next thing that's important to know is there are two tax rates. So there is what's called maintenance and operations, which is traditionally called M and O. Yes, ma'am?
Considering you have only one employee as the superintendent, who is the staff that creates the budget?
So the question was, who is the staff that creates the budget? So we have a CEO and a staff that works through the budget, but we adopt the budget. So we're actively engaged in the process, but they manage the day-to-day operation of the budget. Great question.
CFO?
CFO, sorry, the Chief Financial Officer, not of the school board.
That's one of the board members?
That is not a board member, that's a staff member. So back to the tax rate, we have maintenance and operations, which is called M and O. M and O is your day-to-day expenses for the district. So it's the electricity, it's the water bill, it's paying for all the staff that's supporting students. And that's that day-to-day operations of the school district, our maintenance and operations bucket of the tax rate. Then we have INS or Interest and Seeking Funds. That is the side of the budget that typically deals with construction and long-term projects to keep the district's facilities going, and those INS funds are also called by bond elections, and we issue bond sales. And so, the, the school board manages the, what the tax rate is, along with the budget, and then we will call bond elections and issue bond sales. But it's important to know that the INS and M and O rates do come to the voters, and so we want to make sure that you know that we have the final authority to call for elections, but we do adopt the tax rate. So next is to communicate with the community. So this is our final role, and we communicate with parents, community members, staff, local government, and our legislatures. And one of the key things that we can do as trustees is really listen to our community and build trust within the community and really build support for public education and the value of public education. However, it's also important to note that we operate as a body corporate. So when I'm out in the community personally, I cannot make promises on behalf of the board because we operate as a collective body. And so, that's something really important to know about your school board trustee. While they will listen to you, we ultimately operate as a body corporate, and so we take that information in and really work with the administration to make sure the decisions we're making as a body corporate that are happening behind the dais are aligned with what the community's needs and desires are. And there's another note about operating as a body corporate. All right, next up is Board Operating Procedures.
So the Board Operating Procedures provides structure or framework for how we conduct business in board meetings and with the community. These procedures sometimes reference a specific board policy, but in general, these have more flexibility. The board reviews and adopts these procedures annually. This past year, the entire board had a work study focused on the Board Operating Procedures. In that meeting, we worked collaboratively to refine procedures. Then the updates were reviewed by legal counsel, it was formatted, and the board adopted the updated version. This is an overview of the extensive content of the Board Operating Procedures. Within each of these sections, you will find details on how we navigate our role while also ensuring that we are in compliance with the Open Meetings Act and keeping our governance mindset at the forefront. This Communications Section is critically important. It shares the expectations for how we communicate with other board members, staff, the community, and the media. The Meetings, the Meetings Section details different types of meetings we have, how to prepare for meetings, and how the meetings are conducted. Also, within the Meetings Section is a section about committees. Each board member serves at least one district-level committee as an ex officio member. This enables us to have representation of the board on these committees so that we can share updates with board members about the activity within the committee. These include the Audit Committee, the Safety and Security Committee, the Educational Foundation, the Bond Committee, the School Health and Advisory Council, and the District Improvement Committee. Another notable section is the New Board Member Checklist. This checklist is designed to facilitate welcoming a new board member onto the team while also ensuring they are meeting the requirements for training. Got excited. Elections are conducted annually with about a third of the representation being elected annually. We serve in three-year terms. Our seats are at large. This means we represent the entire district, not a geographical area. This year, we have two seats up for election. The term will be from 2024 to 2027. Trustees are typically sworn in at the June board meeting after the votes have been canvassed from the May election. In our district, we use cumulative voting for our school board elections. Let's watch this video. Click the middle part? There it goes.
School board members in the Carrollton Farmers Branch school districts will be elected using cumulative voting. Under cumulative voting, board members will continue to be elected by all voters living in the district. In cumulative voting, you, the voter, can cast as many votes as there are board member seats up for election. You can cast all of your votes for the same candidate, or you can distribute your votes among multiple candidates. Cumulative voting is very flexible. For example, if four candidates were running for three board member seats, then you, the voter, would have three votes to cast. You can cast all three of your votes for one candidate, you can cast two of your votes for one candidate, and your third vote for another candidate. Or you can cast all three of your votes for three different candidates. As you can see, you can use your three votes in any combination. You are not required to cast all three of your votes, but you cannot cast more than three votes. The three candidates with the most votes win the election. In CFB ISD, we have seven trustees that comprise our school board. Each school board member serves a three-year term. To create continuity on the school board, the terms of trustees are staggered so that school board members come up for election in an annual cycle.
This year, two seats are up for election, so voters can cast your two votes to one candidate or split them across two candidates. Voters are also not required to cast both votes. Policy states that you must have lived in the district for at least six months prior to the filing period and be registered, be a registered voter in the district. These are also listed on the website. See, it doesn't take much for me to map it up. Okay. These are resources for potential board members, again listed on our website. I highly recommend the book, The Governance Core, if you are interested in running for school board election. The required trainings for school board members. Trustees are required to make, take a number of trainings. In this table, you will see that the first year in office has more requirements than subsequent years in office. Additionally, new trustees are required to take some trainings within the first 90 or 120 days. Some of the required trainings are very specific, including our local district orientation, the orientation into the Texas Education Code, and the Open Meetings, and the Open Meetings Act, while others are more flexible and can be determined by the team of eight and individual training needs of the trustees. Annually, we typically attend TASB leadership conferences to support ensuring that we are able to earn all of the required PD and personal growth. Please note that trustees cannot receive credit if they complete the trainings prior to being sworn into office. This shows some additional required trainings for board members. It is also important to note that annually, the board must announce at a public board meeting the training requirements that have been met or not met, and any hours beyond the required that were completed. What to Expect. Next, we want to share what activities a trustee typically engages in. The business of the Board of Trustees is done in meetings. Every month, we have a monthly meeting, typically on the first Thursday of the month. We receive the agendas at least 72 hours in advance, typically it's more like a week, and have an opportunity to ask questions about the consent agenda items. The consent agenda is a mechanism that the board uses to approve routine items, all under one vote, but items can be removed for individual consideration. Additionally, in these meetings, we get updates on progress towards goals and programs. Prior to the meeting, we meet in a pre-meeting where we have an opportunity to get additional clarifications, and the staff shares additional information about the consent agenda. Other types of meetings are scheduled on a regular basis or as needed. Executive closed-meeting sessions are meetings that we are able to have in private session by law. These include personnel matters and real estate. We also have a work-study sessions that last, oh, excuse me, we also have work-study sessions that are at least four times a year. These sessions are designed for the board to work collaboratively, collaboratively on goal-setting. We are currently doing a book study and study programs and initiatives at a deeper level. We do not take action at the work-studies. Special meetings and emergency meetings are called as needed for specific matters that allow for those meetings. Each board member is on at least one committee as an ex officio member. We talked about that earlier. Additional subcommittee, subcommittees are conducted as needed. Most recently, the two subcommittees we had were Facilities Naming Policy Committee and the Board Operating Procedures Committee. On average, we have one to two meetings every month, and they are typically, but not always, on Thursday nights. Each of these meetings are typically, has pre-work. That can range from reviewing documents connected to the agenda for the regular meeting so that a member is able to make an informed vote. It could also be reading a chapter in a book for the work-study session. Board members are encouraged to engage in the community, district activities, and the city and community events. Personally, I really enjoy going to see our students in sports and fine arts events. Board members are also welcome to come visit campuses to see the programs and initiatives in action. We always make sure we follow the Board Operating Procedures when scheduling campus visits. I serve because I love serving and having the opportunity to serve all of our kids, every student, every staff member in CFB ISD. I'm a volunteer at heart. I have been volunteering since my kids were born, probably before that, but before that I had, you know, a full-time job. And now I full-time volunteer, so I love it. It's why I love it, and I help, I love helping guide the district into what I think is to be the best school district it can be.
Thank you, Kim. Yes, one more, we have like two more slides, and then we'll take questions. So important dates to know, if you are interested in serving on the CFB ISD Board of Trustees, the first day to file for a place on the general election ballot was Wednesday, January 17th, and the last day to file for a place on the ballot is Friday, February 16th at 5:00 PM. And the last day to register to vote is Thursday, April 4th, and the first day of early voting is Monday, April 22nd. The last day of early voting is Tuesday, April 30th, and the election will take place on Saturday, May 4th. We do have, if you're interested in getting a candidate ballot or candidate packet to serve on the board, we do have packets available tonight. You'll see Dee Canada in the back. She is our wonderful administrative assistant. You'll see her, and she'll make sure you get the packet of information that you need and get any information from you that she needs. So personally, I love serving because I really feel like the community-based decisions that we make as a board collective really drives the community forward and makes a difference. I personally have two kids in the district, and so I really see the amazing work that this team of eight does and the unity that we have, and it's really a commitment to serving. Sometimes when you've served for a long time, Kim's served a lot of years, I've served a lot of years. You just want to take it to the next level and really engage and support. And so my goal is that the work that this board does really ensures a bright and promising future for all the kids in our district. So with that, we will happily take questions. If you have any questions, and then we'll also stick around afterwards if you have any questions. So are there any questions, ma'am, you had a question? That's a great question. So annually, we adopt a calendar and it has a meeting every single month. It runs from August until June. Typically, we take July off and don't have a meeting in August, in July typically. And so we have a meeting, a general meeting every month. And the purpose of that meeting is to really approve routine decisions under the consent agenda and then items under special consideration. And so that's adopted in our annual calendar, we vote on the calendar. And then our work studies are typically also approved in that annual calendar. So it's the responsibility of the board president and the superintendent to work collaboratively to design the overall calendar for the year with consultation from the board on what they believe the board needs to do. For example, if we feel like we're going to need an extra work study, we'll go ahead and put that in the built-in calendar. And then from there, any additional meetings are called up by the board. Great question. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am? The two positions that are open. This term, Sally Derrick's seat and my seat are open. I have filed. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am? There is not a term limit for school board. There is a limit on officers. Officers can serve for up to three years, but there is not a term limit for school board. Great question. Other questions? Okay. Yes, ma'am? Any cons? I cannot give you any cons. I think that it really takes a lot of passion and heart and somebody that wants to work strategically with a team to be in this role. And so I would just encourage you, if you're interested in running for the board, all board members are willing to have conversations and help people better understand our role. And so I would absolutely reach out to the board members or to Dr. Eldridge, our superintendent. She's sitting right here and she would be happy to also answer questions. There are no cons to running for the board. Other questions? Okay. With that, let me make sure I have my official writing here. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we have reached the end of our agenda and we are adjourned at 6:33 PM. Thank you.